Evening everyone and welcome to the Thursday, December 4th regular meeting of the Boulder City Council. Elisha, can you please do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Good evening and welcome everyone. We'll start tonight's roll call as usual with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Marquess.
Present.
Shoehardt.
Here.
Spear.
Present.
Wallach.
Yeah.
And Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our call.
Thanks so much, Elisha. If we could start, please, with a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 4B, which is appropriating funds to defray 2025 operating expenses for the Noelwood Metropolitan District, please.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, that is unanimous, eight zero. City agenda has been amended. So we will now proceed to the swearing in of council members and Elisha City Clerk Johnson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I would again say thank you everyone for joining us and I'd like to invite the newly elected and re-elected council members to join me on the dais. Alright. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great. First, order of business is to announce the results of the election votes. I will read the statement of votes for the top five candidates. Matt Benjamin, first with twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-six votes. Mark Wallach, second with seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-six votes. Nicole Spear, third with sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty-five votes. Mr. Kaplan, Rob Kaplan, fourth place with fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven votes. Our fifth place person was Jennifer Robbins with fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-one votes. Again, congratulations to all of you. Now for the swearing in, I would like you all please to raise your right hand. This is a group swearing in. And if you would, when I say state your name, that means state your name. Thank you so very much. I, so again, repeat after me. I state your name.
My name, Matt Benjamin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Boulder
And the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Boulder.
And the Constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the Constitution of the state of Colorado.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform all the duties as city council member
Perform all the duties as city council member.
For the city of Boulder, Colorado
For the city of Boulder, Colorado.
As now or hereafter required by law
As now or hereafter required by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Alright, congratulations. I do want to note for the record, your oaths are located here to my right. And when you get an opportunity, if you would sign the top copy and the bottom copy is for you that's in the folder. Okay, you will now take your seats unless you want to have photo opportunities with anyone. But Mr. Kaplan, if you would sit in the open seat, we would certainly appreciate it. You can do as many pictures as you want. Photo opportunities.
Okay, and Elisha, are you going to wrap us up with this portion or?
I'm sorry, sir.
Shall I take over?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will do that.
I certainly appreciate it.
Alright, well, huge congratulations to our returning council members, Matt and Mark and Nicole. And Rob, welcome to City Council. Yeah, congratulations to all. Alright, well, if we can move to our next item, please, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the election returns from the 2025 coordinated municipal election, please, Elisha.
Alright, sir, thank you. And this process is a little detailed, but it is, will go, I have it scheduled where it will go rather quickly, I hope. I am Elisha Johnson, the City Clerk and Records Manager, and I serve as the, also the clerk to the General Canvassing and Election Board. Emily, if you would pull up our presentation, please. Now, in accordance with the City of Boulder Charter, Section 32, and Secretary of State Rule 10 dot 2 dot 4, members of council will sit as the General Canvassing and Election Board. And I, as the City Clerk, will serve as the Secretary of that Board and as the designated election official for the city. The board will consist of members of council that were not running in this year's election. So, to begin, may I have a motion to convene as the General Canvassing and Election Board for the November 4th, 2025 City of Boulder Coordinated Municipal Election.
So moved.
Second.
And this is the point I think where I would like to recuse myself?
No, we'll get to that, yes, ma'am. We will now need to take a vote to convene as the board. And the whole council needs to vote on that convening of the board because the council is currently sitting. And then after we vote to convene, we'll note the motion passed and then I will take a roll call of the board.
So all in favor of the motion to convene as the election board, raise your hand. That's unanimous, nine oh.
That motion passed unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Now, again, the board will consist of the five members that were not included in this year's election. So I will now take a roll call of the canvassing board members. We'll start with Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Present. Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Marquess.
Present.
Shoehardt.
Here.
And Weiner.
Present.
All board members are currently present. Now, if those five, you can leave if you'd like, if you're not participating. If those five will now raise your right hand and please say I do once the oath of office for the canvassing board is completed. No need to repeat the oath. We, the undersigned, do solemnly swear or affirm that we will perform the duties of the General Canvassing and Election Board for the November 4th, 2025 Coordinated Municipal Election held in the city of Boulder, county of Boulder, state of Colorado, according to the law and to the best of my ability.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Now, we will ask for a nomination for a person to serve as the board chair for this meeting. Normally, the mayor is nominated and selected.
I nominate Mayor Brockett.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Mayor Brockett has been designated as the Chair of the Canvassing Board. Thank you all. Now, you will now see the election returns on the screen. Next slide, please, Emily. For the 2025, the city of Boulder had seventy-one thousand three hundred and forty active voters. There were thirty-four thousand one hundred and nine ballots counted. Again, the following are the results of the city council candidate races for the four available seats. Again, Matt Benjamin had twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-six votes. Mark Wallach had seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-six votes. Nicole Spear, sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-five votes. And Rob Kaplan with fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven votes. Those are your current winners. The following ballot measures, next slide, please, Emily. The following ballot measures were presented to the electors at the November 4th, 2025 election. We had ballot issue number 2C related to the CCRS tax extension. It was a Tabor measure.
Elisha, I believe that was item 2A.
It's 2A? Thank you. See, I always have one thing go wrong. Ballot issue 2A is the CCRS tax extension. It is a Tabor measure. There were twenty-four thousand seven votes yes for that measure and it did pass. We have ballot measure number 2B. And it was the CCRS tax extension debt authorization. It also was a Tabor measure. And that measure passed with twenty-one thousand eighty-two votes for the measure. I also would like to present the following documents to you included in your packet. We included the notification of the approved ballot, the certificate of the public notices of the November 4th, 2025 election, and the official summary of votes. The official results as well as historic information are also available on the Boulder County Elections website. Could I now have a motion to approve the election returns for the City of Boulder 2025 Coordinated Municipal Election that was held on November 4th?
So moved.
Second?
I didn't hear the second.
I think I said second.
Oh, you said second.
It was a little quiet, sorry.
Oh, perfect, perfect. Alright, all in favor? Thank you. The November 4th, 2025 municipal election results are hereby approved by the Canvassing Board unanimously. So the certification of the election results is now complete. With the chair, please present a motion to adjourn the meeting of the General Canvassing Board for the City of Boulder Coordinated Municipal Election and reconvene as the City Council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, please raise your hands. That carries five zero.
Thank you, everyone. I will now turn to Mayor Brockett to reconvene the City Council meeting.
Okay, I hereby reconvene us into the meeting of the Boulder City Council. And I will take a moment to go fetch our absent members. Okay, welcome back, folks. So if we can go now that we have the election certified, if we can go to item 2B, please, Elisha.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our item 2B on tonight's agenda is the designation of a council member as Mayor Pro Tem for the 2026 year per Council Rules of Procedure 1D1. And in relation to those procedures as outlined in the, in the BRC, it was required to have a person that was interested, the council member that was interested in serving, submit via hotline their letter or notification of interest. Councilmember Weiner submitted that letter of interest and she will be designated as the Mayor Pro Tem for the 2026 year. Congratulations, ma'am.
Let's have a round of applause there. Tara, would you like to say a few words?
I have a very long speech. Just kidding. Thank you, council, for allowing me this privilege of serving as Mayor Pro Tem and I will do my best.
So Tara, I, I love you as a colleague. I will say you do tend to go on a bit long. But I'm very excited to have you serving as the Mayor Pro Tem for the next year. You've been a phenomenal colleague. I know you're going to do an amazing job as Mayor Pro Tem. So if you want to scoot one seat over to the left. Alright, so Tara Weiner is now officially designated the Mayor Pro Tem for the year 2026 for the Boulder City Council. Alright, well, our next item of business is open comment, but that does have a published start time of 5:30. So I'm going to go ahead and recess the meeting right now and we will come back at 5:30 for open comment. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Thank you. All right. So if you could, if you can read our public participation guidelines, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for being here today and your participation at tonight's council meeting. We ask that you abide by the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code, which includes, "Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. Individuals must display their whole names before being allowed to speak online. Only audio testimony is permitted during open comment. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any council meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the council. Our remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to council business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person." And lastly, obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the meeting will not be tolerated. Thank you again for joining us, and thank you for listening.
Thanks for that, Alicia. We've got 11 people sign up to speak in a mix of virtual and in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes, and I will be strict about that time limit in the interest of fairness. And our first three speakers are Elliot Fladen, virtual, Carolyn Beninsky, virtual, and Colin Spear, in-person.
May I begin?
Yes.
Recently HBO produced an award-winning series on Chernobyl. It depicted not only the 1986 disaster, but how bureaucrats were motivated to lie to each other to advance their careers thereby harming millions. The show's key quote, "Every lie we tell incurs a debt to the truth. Sooner or later, that debt is paid." That captures exactly what goes on at this council, meeting after meeting on Israel. As I pointed out in a previous speech, the other side operates under a delusion that if they repeat a racist, bigoted lie often, or get a seemingly reputable institution to print that lie on fancy letterhead, then the lie somehow becomes true. And in response, some have claimed that identifying this lie as rooted in racism and bigotry is not, but instead, quote-unquote, bullying. But truth does not depend on consensus, branding, or letterhead. And no matter how offended these bigots become by the fact that genocide is a legally defined offense with elements that are not met, the truth remains. It remains despite lies printed on UN stationery by International Association of Genocide Scholars, Dog and Cookie Monster genocide scholars, or by Amnesty International burying its changed definition of genocide on page 101 of our report, all so it can slur Jews. And that gets to the problem. The racists and bigots here are not the ones paying the debt to the truth, and their circle, lying about Jews advances them, or at least protects them from being ostracized in environments where the truth itself is treated as a microaggression. Instead, the people who pay the debt are the most historically targeted and discriminated against minority on earth, the Jewish community. So I urge this council, do not continue to sit silent while these racists and bigots repeat their lies yet again. Stand for truth, and turn your back and walk out on those who spread racist blood libels. Thank you.
Thanks. Then we'll go to Carolyn Beninsky, virtual, then Colin Spear, in-person, and Elliot Howe, in-person.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Carolyn Beninsky, and I'm here to talk about the local authority over broadband. Both the Federal Communications Commission and the U.S. House of Representatives are pushing forward policies that would preempt local authority over public rights-of-way and land use in broadband and telecommunications infrastructure deployment. Yesterday's U.S. House Energy and Commerce Committee votes pushed a slate of broadband and energy bills one step closer to stripping local governments of authority over the placement of cell towers, pipes, and major infrastructure. Taken together, these bills shift power from city councils and county boards to Washington and corporations that profit from permanent build-out. In a November 17 letter to the U.S. House of Representatives and the Federal Communications Commission, four local government associations, United States Conference of Mayors, the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, and the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors strongly opposed, I'm sorry, expressed strong opposition to proposed federal legislation and FCC actions that would preempt local authority in broadband and telecommunications infrastructure deployment. I have sent you a link to this very informative document, and hope the council will weigh in on this with Congressman Nagus and our U.S. senators. Key points from the document: Opposition to federal preemption; the essential, two, the essential role of local governments in broadband deployment; three, concerns with federal over-
Time's up. Thank you for your testimony. All right. Our next three in-person speakers are Colin Spear, Elliot Howe, and Lynn Seagull.
Hello. Thanks for having me. I'm here to express my disappointment in the relocation of The Dark Horse and the development of Willville 2. The Dark Horse is a pillar of this community. It's more than just a restaurant. And if you're not born and raised here and grew up going there, then you probably don't understand, and it's probably hard to communicate what it means. But was born and raised here, spent a lot of my childhood there, met some of my best friends there, and actually had a memorial for my brother who passed away there because of what it meant to him. The Dark Horse is part of a growing trend where we see our local pillars of Boulder being pushed out. You have Sancho's, you have Cosmo's on the Hill, you have Breadworks, all being pushed out by these large complexes that are just here for bottom-dollar profit, not for preserving what Boulder is all about. These institutions are what people come to Boulder for. Outside of our natural beauty, we have here the unique experiences you get here, why people come. These are why things like Sundance come here, these are why we have tourists, this is why we have visitors. And if we keep demolishing them, we're not going to have visitors, and we're not going to have festivals. I try to mitigate my anger around this subject by understanding that this is for affordable housing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I've seen that none of these homes that are going to be built are deemed affordable housing, but instead, there's a one-time payment to the Affordable Housing Fund. I'd love some transparency around that of how much is being paid and what those funds will be allocated to. If affordable housing was a true issue that we were worried about in Boulder, I think it's something we maybe would have considered when we let Google build here. I think it's something we maybe would have considered when we built those hotels on the Hill. And I think it's something we would have considered when we took down Macy's and built offices that are seemingly empty on 29th Street. There's no upside that I can find to this project, and one of the biggest issues I see is the infrastructure. We continue to see the development of these projects across Boulder, but we don't see any sort of development in infrastructure that can-
Your time is up, but thank you for your testimony.
All right.
All right. Our next three speakers are all in-person, and they are Elliot Howe, Lynn Seagull, and Rob Smoke. Do we have Elliot Howe here? Not seeing anybody, so we'll go to Lynn Seagull, who I also do not see present here. Next, we have Rob Smoke, in-person. There we go.
Mayor, I do see Lynn online.
Okay. Well, let's go to Lynn online then, and then we'll go to Rob Smoke, in-person.
Lynn Seagull, agree with the last speaker. There's planning board meeting this week included. Sorry, it's, I'm at 45 degrees in my house. All winter. After the city of Boulder offered me a retrofit so that I can fund Excel Energy, which I won't do. On Tuesday, they approved project at Boulder Dinner Theater, Rappahoe and 55th. It's going to be a rock monolith with a bunch of commercial that's not going to be filled in, you know, at The Olive, which is basically student, expansive student housing, $2,500 for 297 square feet at 15th and Canyon. No commercial there. $60 for five feet of storage, five by five by nine. It's outrageous, the prices here. That equates to $12 a foot for storage and $8 a foot for the living space, a micro-efficiency apartment for $2,500. It just doesn't make sense, and we keep on, I mean, Boulder, let's say, unfortunately, I live here, but Boulder keeps on producing these. And more high-end student housing at The Dark Horse and the Millennium. And I want to start seeing by the person, not by the unit, because they're doing six-bedroom apartments, and that works out really well for the developer. Free Palestine, free Gaza now.
Thanks. Now we'll go to Rob Smoke, in-person, then Evan Rabitz, virtual, and Jeff Price, in-person.
Good evening. My name is Rob Smoke, and I live in Boulder. And I feel honored to be here this evening and witnessing the swearing-in of people running for the office that I also ran for. In doing so, I made it clear to a lot of individuals that I really wanted to make a point about the significance of divestment for the city of Boulder. And an example of that was just driven home this past week. If you get online and you look for video from Janine, you can see Caterpillar excavation equipment knocking down the wall of a building and the soldiers lining up on one side, and two men coming out with their hands raised and promptly being beaten, and then shot and killed. And it'd be one thing if that was just some rare, you know, incredible incident, you know, like a war crime. You know, Israel has certainly the right to investigate itself for such a thing. Well, no, that's not the case, and that's why there are organizations like Human Rights Watch, which has been around since 1978 and is respected globally for their work, why they and a whole string of other very significant human rights and humanitarian agencies don't pass sentence on Israel, but pass sentence on what is actually happening in Gaza, which is genocide. And, yeah, sure, anyone can say, hey, you're anti-Semitic because you're speaking against Israel. Well, I'm Jewish, I grew up in a Jewish family, and never thought I'd be here speaking on behalf of kids who are voiceless and are being killed in Gaza. Thank you.
Thanks. And we've got someone standing in the aisle here. We're just going to need you to sit down. Are you up next?
This is Elliot Howe. I was online, but the person didn't promote me when I was online, so I was fourth, but I'm here now. I've got a two-minute speech for you all. Boulder. Content warning: Current going-ons in U.S.-funded Israeli torture prisons. Did you know the city of Boulder has 38 million invested in Israeli apartheid? You must disclose and divest from all groups committing genocide, including Israel and the UAE, who is funding genocide in Sudan. We need to cut the umbilical cord between the U.S. and Israel, starting by divesting from complicit companies, including but not limited to Chevron, Intel, Palantir, HP, Airbnb, BlackRock, Caterpillar, Hyundai, Microsoft, and Amazon, all of who are funding Israeli apartheid and genocide, as detailed in Francesca Albanese's U.N. Special Report, From Occupation Economy to Economy of Genocide. There are some who lie and say that the genocide is over. To those people, we clarify our demands: Divest from apartheid, including Israeli genocidal apartheid. Israel is currently holding over 9,000 Palestinian hostages without trial or charge, whom they illegally abducted. The hostages include medical professionals, women, children, and those prisons are notorious for- for torture and sexual assault. In the past year, we've seen video from one of these torture prisons in which Israeli guards surround a prisoner and repeatedly insert an object into them. Despite this video being shared all over around the world, these soldiers in this terrorist state have faced no consequences. By now, we know the names of the individuals directly involved in the killing of Hindra Jap, including a U.S. Navy SEAL, Sean Glass. We need to hold these murderers accountable. By now, we have heard the testimonies from released Palestinian hostages who testify that Israeli guards trained dogs to rape them. If you feel worse for the dogs than for the humans, you have a lot of thinking to do. We've heard from released female hostages that Israeli guards come in and rape them, while more Israelis on the outside of the prison make as much noise as possible to drown out the screams of the women. More than a year ago, we saw footage of Israelis officials discussing whether or not it's okay to rape Palestinian hostages, and they said it was. Around the same time, we saw mobs of Israelis break into their own prison to release the nine Israeli rapists who were charged with rape, then had speaking tours on Israeli television. If you're not already convinced that this group is a terrorist group, know this: Israel has literally been building tunnels under the compound of Al-Aqsa Mosque and under holy Christian sites in East Jerusalem as well. They are attacking the West Bank as we speak, the part of Palestine Bethlehem is in. I call on all who call themselves Christians to do all in your power to divest from Israeli apartheid. You are funding rape, torture, kidnapping, tunneling, bombing, and mass starvation. I now know that my and your ancestors did much the same thing when they stole the land we stand on from the indigenous nations of Turtle Island, but we have to do better than our ancestors for the future of the earth, humanity, and our own eternal souls.
Your time is up. Oh, quiet in the audience, please. Quiet. Okay. Qui- quiet. Okay, so our next three speakers are Evan Rabitz virtually, and then Jeff Price and Eric Gross in person.
Now I've got to switch to this. Hello. For years, people have objected to the city spending our money on so-called push polls, where questions are phrased to deceive and manipulate. A couple of months ago, Councilmember Spear sent her newsletter subscribers to a useful paper helping people distinguish honest from dishonest polling, but hypocritically, she included a link to the recent city survey about housing. The very first question asked what kind of housing we wanted more of, but didn't include single-family homes, tiny homes, or none of the above. So it's not actually asking what we want, but to support what you have already decided. This sets a very bad example, and now the opposition in the form of Boulder Action, in their current poll, asks, quote, "Do you approve of ranked choice voting, or do you think the person who gets the most votes should win?" I emailed their administrator, but they refused to make the poll honest by saying, "With ranked choice voting, the person who gets the most first-choice votes wins." So the city's repeated dishonesty is now spreading. Congratulations, stupid childish destructive leaders. You bring about what Hannah Arendt said propaganda results in: people who can't tell the truth from lies. So the city can keep lying about some rule preventing you from reconsidering our investments in genocide, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, the rest of our speakers are in person, and the next three are Jeff Price, Eric Gross, and Josh Maynard.
First, I'd like to thank the council for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight.
If you can speak directly into the mic, please.
Yeah, okay, how's that? Is that better? Okay, sorry about that. I'm here tonight because there seems to be a rumor swirling around that if and when the South Boulder Community Center is either rebuilt, that there won't be a lap pool. So I'm here on behalf of that. I've lived in South Boulder, Shanahan Ridge area, for the past 27 years. I've been a mediator, volunteer mediator, for the city of Boulder and restorative justice for 17 years. When this was brought to my attention and some of the other people that are members of the community center in South Boulder, I just thought of all the positive reasons to have a lap pool there. I'm a strong believer in exercise. It's such a positive thing physically, as well as cognitively, for people who are seniors like myself. In particular, since we're talking about the swimming and the lap pool, I just want to remind the council members that the swimming is such a positive endeavor for people of all ages, for kids to learn how to swim, they can do it through their whole lives, and especially for, I'll speak personally here, for seniors. It's a great way to get a cardiovascular, cardiovascular exercise, 40, 50 a minutes, hour, it's local neighborhood, no matter where you live in South Boulder, the rec. center is probably no more than, oh.
Your time is up. Thank you for your testimony.
That went fast. Excuse me, all right, thanks very much.
All right, our last three speakers are Eric Gross, Josh Maynard, and Aaron Brooks.
Been a while since I saw any of you.
It will be a normal life after this war ends. Okay, what about the people that I lose? I lose my brother, my aunt, my friends, I lose many things in this world. When this end, how, how, I will, I don't know, but this is so difficult to think that everything will be normal. We have memories, bad memories from this world, and I want to speak about my brother, my friends, everyone that I lose in this world, I want to tell a whole about them because they are not just a number. They are, have stories, and so beautiful stories. They was have many dream, some of them have children, some of them have a life, some of them have good things to do, but they cannot, they murder. For that, I wait, I will wait, I will wait this war finish and know my destiny, surviving or dying. If I will survive, I will be strong to tell the stories about the people for the world. If I don't survive, I want to from all of you to speak about me and remember me.
I send you all pictures and videos of this almost every day. It's not going to end until people like you fucking end it.
Your time is up. Okay, our last two speakers are Josh Maynard and Aaron Brooks.
Hi there, my name is Josh Maynard, lived in Boulder for 14 of the last 19 years, and today I'm here particularly to talk about ranked choice voting and better election methods for representative democracy. Three of the four newcomers to the city council I voted for, so go me and go you. That said, I'm a registered independent and not a Democrat, and it's because I don't find either party really represents my values anymore, and I am not blaming you all for that at all, because the party is on a national level, but I am saying there are more independents than there are either major party at this point, and there's a reason for that. And so pretty much, I would urge you all to look into and/or call a study session on proportional representation for the city council elections. I've done a little bit of research myself, and in a minute, I can definitely do no justice in explaining the concept, so I won't even bother to do that, but I would urge you to come to the community conversation on proportional representation on January 14th at the Longmont City Council chambers. Longmont is looking into electing the city council as ranked choice voting. Fort Collins just did so and had their first election, which was fantastic. Ranked choice voting in a single-member district or a single-member candidacy like a mayor kind of defeats the point of ranked choice voting, because the whole point is to elect the most liked candidates and you rank them, and if you only have one candidate that you're going for, then it's still a very much first-pass-the-post system where it's a winner-take-all system. So highly urge you to educate yourselves on ranked choice voting and come to the community conversation on proportional representation, and perhaps even team up with the city of Longmont, because they're doing a study session right now on ranked choice voting. And with that, I appreciate your time.
Thanks. Our final speaker is Aaron Brooks.
I want to address a pattern that has become impossible to ignore in these chambers. A tiny but very loud group, less than 1/10 of 1% of Boulder, and some that do not even live in Boulder, some of whom are here this evening, repeatedly demanding if the city, quote-unquote, "divest from companies that do business with Israel." This premise collapses the moment you look at the facts. I recently watched a pre-October 7th documentary on campus antisemitism called Blind Spot, which focuses partly on the city/university of New York, which is one of the worst systems in the country for documented antisemitism even prior to October 7th. In it, New York City Councilwoman Ina Vernikov asks the college's senior vice president whether, excuse me, senior vice chancellor, whether she's seen boycott, divest, or sanction campaigns against Russia, China, Iran, Saudi Arabia, or North America. All of these are nations with clearly documented severe human rights abuses. Her answer on all five: no. Then she asked about BDS efforts against the state of Israel. Her answer: yes. And her explanation was very simple and very honest, and the only logical answer one can give, and that is because some people are simply anti-Semitic. Now, this selective outrage, specifically arguing, targeting the world's one Jewish state while ignoring every other one, committing documented atrocities is not human rights advocacy, it's actually discrimination dressed up as activism. Now, here in Boulder, we see the same pattern. A sitting council member has shared, by my count, over 850 anti-Israel posts on her Instagram since October 7th. When you put that level of one-directional targeting next to these repeated divestment demands, the intent becomes obvious, and frankly, it's disgusting. So I'm asking this council to recognize what this really is: stop legitimizing a prejudicial and selectively applied campaign, and stand with the overwhelmingly majority, overwhelming majority of Boulder residents who reject antisemitism in all its forms, including when it's disguised as political advocacy. Let's get back to taking care of what the issues that you are all elected to do here in Boulder. Thank you.
Your time's up. Okay. Thanks. So be quiet, quiet, quiet in the audience. This is your last warning, you need to be quiet. Okay, that's the end of open comment. I'll turn to city staff to see if there are any responses.
Thanks so much, Mayor. There was one operational point that was made in terms of recreation in South Boulder, and I just wanted to say, I appreciate the comments. We do not yet know, and I know there's a lot of interest in this community about aquatics. We've had a lot of conversation with community about it. We just finished the Recreation Center Needs Assessment that went to Prab in October. It will be the foundation that we use as we go into next year with our Fund Our Futures conversation, as we think about and talk with community about what we can fund for recreation across the city, but in particular in South Boulder. And so we will be using that as foundation, we will be talking about it as we move forward, but we have not ruled anything out or in as we continue to have that conversation with community.
Thanks, Teresa.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Any questions for city staff? Tayshia, you have a question?
I just more, more of just a gentle entry on the broadband question. One of the speaking people were talking about a recent thing that could potentially impact local, local control related to broadband, and I just wasn't aware of that, so I just, I don't need to have the answer at this moment, but just wanted to make a flag. Thank you.
We're aware of it and following it. Happy to provide an update.
And finally, does, do any council members want to use up to 30 seconds to respond to open comment? Tayshia.
I want to thank those community members who continue to come in spite of council majority being unwilling to use the authorities that we have to call for a ceasefire resolution and to align our investments with our values. As someone who's recently returned from Alabama and was reminded that our government was never able to pass an anti-Lynchings law, ever, ever, and it took 400 years to end chattel slavery. So keep coming back, our systems only work when we work them. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, that ends the open comment period. It's 6 o'clock, the rest of the business meeting will start at 6:30, so go ahead and recess us until 6:30.
As the Boulder City Council, and Elisha, can we do the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Benjamin, for that. I needed that laugh. Our consent agenda is item number four on tonight's agenda, and it consists of items four A and four C through G. Item four B was removed.
Great. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On item E, that's the policy statement one, I know we have a few items from the November meeting that IGA is going to be looking at and bringing back. Can staff give a sense of when we're likely to have the updated policy statement coming back to us?
Thank you, councilmember. I am looking ahead to the calendar, and we have a, excuse me, we have, I thought it was eighteenth. Was it eighth? We have an IGA meeting scheduled later on this month, and I was just trying to figure out when that is. We do have time available to bring this if the IGA committee is finished with its work and is able to, and we are able to move it forward. We have time available on the calendar to bring it forward on January eighth, which would be your first meeting.
Super. Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands, perhaps a motion?
I just all of a sudden went there and I couldn't see it. Oh, there it is.
I move the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second. Elisha, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll start tonight's roll call on the consent agenda, items four A, four C through four G, with Councilmember Shuhar.
Yes.
Spear?
Yes.
Walek?
Yes, with the exception of, I believe it's paragraph twenty-two of the policy statement.
So, Mark, I think procedurally, you'd need to either vote yes or no on the entire policy statement.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And it's my pleasure to say, Mayor Pro Tim Weiner.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Bronkit?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Yes.
And Marquess?
Yes.
The consent agenda items are hereby approved unanimously.
Very good. Thanks so much. All right. Our next item is our one public hearing for the evening.
Yes, sir. Our public hearings are item number six on tonight's agenda. It is six A, and it is the consideration of a second, excuse me, I had something in my throat. My apologies. It is the second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt by emergency measure ordinance eighty-seven thirty-three appropriating money to defray expenses and liabilities of the city of Boulder for the 2025 fiscal year and setting forth related details.
Thank you so much, Ms. E. Councilmembers, as you know, we generally bring to council two adjustments to base in our budget twice a year. This is an end of the year, mostly reconciliation. There are some other items that may come up. But for that and a more thorough discussion, I will pass you on to our lovely CFO, Krista Morrison.
Well, good evening, members of city council. Krista Morrison, Chief Financial Officer. And I'm joined this evening by Stacy Polikova. Stacy is a budget analyst with the Budget Office. We will walk through tonight a brief ten-minute presentation of the adjustment to base, answer any questions that you may have prior to public hearing, and provide motion language for council consideration and approval this evening. So this chart shows the city's annual budget cycle with the fiscal year concurrent with the calendar year from January through December. As indicated by the two red pins, each year at least two budget supplemental appropriation ordinances known as adjustments to base are presented to city council for review and approval. Supplemental appropriations brought forward to council consider criticality of items such as emerging needs or mid-year emergencies, or funds received mid-years such as grants and donations. Staff carefully reviews supplemental appropriations prior to bringing forward for council approval, which come forward annually at least twice a year, with the first adjustment in June and the second and final budget adjustment in December, as shown in this chart. Adjustments to base are generally presented as one-time budget adjustments to support unplanned investments, voter-approved changes, emerging community needs, and mid-year grants and donations. The adjustments to base are classified into three categories, the first being fund balance. These are unbudgeted, unanticipated expenditures supported by fund balance. The second is additional unbudgeted revenue. So these are unbudgeted, anticipated expenditures supported by additional revenue. And then the final category is our grant-supported. These are unbudgeted, anticipated expenditures using revenue received from grants. In this ATB two, staff is recommending a total of sixteen million dollars in budget adjustments, including six point two million from fund balance, two point five million in mid-year grants received, and seven point two million from additional unbudgeted revenue, including revenue from donations, inter-local agreements, and additional revenue above forecasted amounts that were not captured in the original budget. Adjustments to base are necessary in standard practice to support the appropriation of unplanned expenses, support additional unbudgeted revenues of fund balance and mid-year grants received but not yet appropriated for the fiscal year. As shared with council earlier in the year and within the staff memo, staff is bringing forward planned citywide budget adjustments in this adjustment to base to support the 2025 budget shortfall, which was identified earlier this year and now brought forward to city council review and approval as part of the adjustments we need to make to close this fiscal year. As shared recently during the 2026 budget discussions, with 2025 department savings targets, the hiring freeze, and support from inner fund transfers included in this adjustment to base, staff anticipate shoring up the budget shortfall for 2025 that stemmed from the flattening revenues and unplanned expenses. For context, while the sixteen million dollars in the adjustment to base appears as a large number, it's important to note that this amount, the total draw for fund balance, represents thirty-nine percent of this total. Almost half of that amount is supporting a planned acquisition in the open space fund, and zero dollars from fund balance are being requested from the general fund. This adjustment to base represents the lowest in fund balance draws brought forward to city council in the five most recent adjustments to base. I share this for context of the constrained environment due to flattening revenues. Overall, this adjustment to base represents the financially constrained position of the city, with adjustments limited to only those necessary for unexpected expenditures, new mid-year grants, and year-end close adjustments. As standard practice, the budget staff will continue to monitor major revenue sources to understand any changes in forecasted revenue against the original budget, and will continue to bring forward updates to the city council. Now to present highlights to the adjustment to base, I will pass this over to Stacy Polikova.
Good evening, everyone. We will be pulling forward several items from the ATB to highlight. And we've organized these highlights by overarching themes, and the first is capital infrastructure and acquisition investments. The first item is a mineral rights acquisition for mineral rights under city property, and this is an anticipated expense that is planned for in advance and is a draw from fund balance from a reserve specifically intended for acquisition. And this purchase was recommended by the Open Space Board of Trustees. The second item is appropriation of revenue from the sale of the Dairy Arts Center, which will be used to offset some capital investments, including Sundance Film Festival future expenses. The city is also requesting to appropriate reimbursements from Boulder Regional Telephone Service Authority for the radio infrastructure replacement project that Bretza recommended the city complete. And there is also requests for additional appropriation for the Streetlight Acquisition Project due to unanticipated increased expenses in the project this year. The next section covers public safety and wildland fire reimbursement appropriations. One is the reimbursement of wildland deployments by fire rescue and open space in mountain parks of one point two million dollars, and these are reimbursements from the state and expenses associated with deployments are offset. Reimbursements for additional police overtime are also requested for appropriation. These are reimbursements for overtime associated with special events. We have also highlighted certain citywide items. These are primarily related to balancing the general fund and shoring up the gap. The first is a transfer of interest earnings from several internal service funds, and we are leaning on the flexibility of revenues to support balancing the general fund and closing that gap by one point two million. And the second is the cost allocation subsidy reduction. Four funds were subsidized by the general fund for their cost allocation transfers, and we've reduced the subsidy to balance the general fund. And the final item is the administrative closeout of several funds. The intent of this is to align the expenses from these funds to more appropriate funds to comply with accounting standards. And finally, we've highlighted several grants this evening. ATB two consists of two point six million of requested appropriations due to additional grants and awards the city has received mid-year. Some of these include Boulder County Emergency Services Sales Tax Grant Program, which provides funding for equipment, the Colorado Strategic Wildlife Action Program funding, which supports the reduction of fuels and protection of water and infrastructure, the History Colorado Non-Competitive Grant, which provides funding for an ethnographic education report on tribal history in Boulder County, and the Strategic Fuels Mitigation Grant, which provides support to the Wonderland Lake Cross Boundary Risk Reduction Project and unifies other pilot projects for efficiency. And now that we've given an overview of some highlights, well, this concludes our presentation. We'll transition to questions.
Great. Thanks so much. Any questions for city staff? Tina?
Yeah, thanks so much. Just a quick question on the reimbursements to the police department. Were those reimbursements for dollars that have already been spent, or is it forward-thinking?
These reimbursements were for events that already occurred, like Boulder Thon and Boulder Boulder, and some other events.
Okay. And so where did that money originally come from?
I'm looking. One moment, please. We're using existing appropriation, that's what I thought, from the general fund, and now it's being reimbursed by the events and businesses that receive those sentences.
Okay. I was just curious how that worked.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go to the public hearing. We have one person signed up to speak. So Lynn Siegel, you get three minutes.
Mayor, I do not see Lynn online tonight.
In that case, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to city council for deliberations. Who would like to get us started on the subject of our adjustment to base?
And also say thank you to staff for all of the work that goes into this. I move that we adopt by emergency measure, Ordinance 8733, appropriating money to defray expenses and liabilities of the city of Boulder for the 2025 fiscal year.
We have a motion and then a second from Councilmember Wallick. Elisha, can we do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll start the roll call for Ordinance 8733's adoption by emergency measure with Councilmember Spear.
Yes.
Wallick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wiener?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Rocket?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Yes.
Marquis?
Yes.
And Shuhar?
Yes.
Ordinance 8733 is hereby adopted by two-thirds vote as an emergency measure.
All right. Well, thanks so much. Appreciate all of your hard work on this and the efficient presentation as well. Okay, we got one item left. Elisha, if you can take this to that, please.
Yes, sir. Our next item on tonight's agenda is item number seven, matters from the city manager. Seven A is the City Council 2026 Retreat Touchpoint.
Thanks so much. And as our Assistant City Manager gets settled into place, I'll just say a big thank you to our council members who are part of this committee, Mayor Pro Tem Wiener, Councilmember Spear. Really helpful as we were thinking about what the retreat will look like for next year. We know this is an unusual year with one-year sort of council priority setting as we move forward. And with that, I believe Pam, I have bought you enough time to proceed.
Just enough. Thank you very much, Nuria. Good evening, Council. My name's Pam Davis, and I use she/her pronouns and serve as Assistant City Manager for Boulder. We are here tonight for a brief touchpoint on preparation for the City Council Retreat in January of 2026. And in a few moments, I'm going to turn to our newly-appointed Mayor Pro Tem Wiener, who is going to represent the Retreat Committee this evening. But first, I'm going to go over some of the retreat preparation activities. You have seen this before, but given that you are now officially the newly-seeded council that will be setting 2026 priorities, we wanted to ensure that we were all on the same page about our next steps as we prepare. And so with that, we are midway this winter into you all doing your initial brainstorming and connecting with staff related to potential ideas for your priority projects for 2026. In the coming weeks, we have several milestones for you to keep in mind. One is that on December 19th is the deadline that we gave to boards and commissions to provide their final letters to you all as you consider upcoming priorities and prepare to assess what those are for the retreat in January. We're asking by December 21st that we receive your final priority proposals. Those can go directly to Nuria by email. We do ask if you're able to copy Meg's Valier, our council program manager, because she's helping to coordinate those things behind the scenes. We will then do some work kind of over the holidays in conjunction with our facilitator to present back to you a list of all of the individual council priority ideas and provide a survey for you to essentially do an individual ranking of what priorities you believe will rise to the top for 2026 action by the city. We will then provide you back the results of that survey, and you'll have about just over a week before the City Council Retreat to kind of take a look at that collective ranking of priorities as we think about where to maximize our time during the council retreat and finalize those list of priorities for you all as a body next year. So I'll feel free to include me in your questions when we go to discussion, but for now, I will now turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Wiener to chat with us a little bit about the retreat days itself.
First, as you know, our retreat facilitator is the wonderful... Do I turn this way or this way when I talk to everybody?
Both.
Heather Bergman will be the facilitator, and you all know she's awesome and also a lot of fun. So she gave us a lot of guidance, and if you don't agree with whatever we did, I don't know what to tell you because you have to listen to us, right? Right, Nicole? Okay. As of now, we are planning to hold the retreat Monday, January 12th, and Tuesday, January 13th, from 9:30 to 4:00 with a half an hour of meal break built in. However, as we discuss our proposed agenda tonight, we can address adjusting that timing, shortening the retreat on either or both days. For instance, should we do 9 to 4, and then just the morning the next day, et cetera, et cetera? Pam, are you going to give us those options or what?
From a staff perspective, we're open. We believe that having time allocated both days is important to give us a chance to sort of navigate the prioritization conversation. But beyond that, if you all think that you can wrap up priorities in a few hours on day two and so forth, we're happy to accommodate whatever you think is best as a council.
Okay. So I feel like we won't even know till those two days. Do you agree or no?
I think it would be great for planning purposes to have a sense of kind of what your preferences are as a body here tonight. So when we get to those questions for council is when we would discuss that.
Okay, great. Okay, next. As a reminder, even though you've heard this many times, council, the retreat will begin, first of all, with a fun time of council relationship building. Now, I know you think you all know each other, but I guarantee you, there's something you don't know about each one of us, or however I say it. Anyway, it's going to be like speed relationships. So you meet with each person, each and every person, for a little bit of time, and you get to know what their communication styles are and how you can most productively work with each of the individuals. It's going to be fun, I promise. Then, we're going to work for the remainder of day one and the beginning of day two on the priority setting exercise. As you are aware, we only have one year to set and complete our priority work plan. As a reminder, the committee has provided the following guidance. First of all, select projects that could be completed within three- to six-month timeframe, which is really short. So nothing like "save the planet," even though we all want to do that. Oops. Next thing... No, we all do want to, but it's not a three- to six-month priority is what I'm saying. Yeah, okay. Just in case anybody is out there. I'm sorry, I'll be serious. Okay. To the extent possible, align your work priorities, your work plan priorities with the existing items in the citywide strategic plan. If you haven't read that document, it is awesome, and there's so much happening there that we're hoping, Nicole and I, that you can align your priorities with something on that PDF document. Okay. The number of priority projects would be flexible depending on the anticipated work plan impact associated with each item. Day two will conclude with a very, very brief council process improvement discussion. Due to CMO staff capacity, this exercise will be very small. So we are asking council members to submit these with their work plan priority proposals and that they are brief and super important. Okay. Nicole, what did I forget?
I think you got it all. I think you got it all. Pam, did I forget anything?
No, I think you got it. I think the one thing I would add that wasn't in your script was that you have also received some preliminary information from our city manager regarding the 2026 work plan from all departments, and you'll be getting kind of a finalized version of that next week as well to help you in your final thinking.
Okay. Finally, does City Council have any questions about the 2026 retreat plans or expectations for preparation, which I'm not really sure what that means, Pam? Pam wrote this for me.
It was the way the question was phrased, Mayor Pro Tem. It was simply, do you have questions on the preparation timeline or on the retreat itself?
Any questions? Please ask, Nicole.
I saw Tina Ryan and Matt.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem, for that overview, and Nicole for your work, and clearly Pam. Will the work plan that you're giving us a revised copy, will that be publicly available on the website?
So we continue to work on a dashboard that puts our work plan externally. We have one for council. We will continue to figure out how to put all of our work, and I'll say that this is, as I mentioned in the email, this is not the entirety of the work that staff does, but we are figuring out how to put all of that as an external placeholder for everyone to see. It is not at the moment, but we're working on it.
Okay. Will it be available before the retreat or?
I do not know. Well, I do not know.
Okay.
I'm sorry, point of clarification.
Point of clarification.
Are you talking about publicly available before the retreat?
Yes. Great. And then the other piece, I went over that rough draft, and we had a lot of ambitious priorities that we started two years ago that are still in progress. And what I'm trying to understand is how can we be clear about really what staff can reasonably take on for the next 12 months in a way so that we maintain good progress on the other priorities and don't distract from that work? So I'm just concerned how this is going to work.
So, and I appreciate that. And to clarify, while we may want to make it perfect and make it into a pretty dashboard, if there is an interest of council to have that be external-facing, we can certainly make that so without the prettiness of it and not let perfection be the enemy of good when that is finalized. So we can certainly do that before the retreat. As to how does that translate into when you bring forth priorities, we will have what has been now kind of, I think, a productive conversation about trade-offs. We will talk about it. We will, we hope in giving you this, that you see what the major initiatives are, because that is not by any means the entirety of the work, but we wanted to give you a sense of the major initiatives that are consuming staff's time. And as you can see in that document, I also tried to include the departments that are impacted. For example, the city attorney's office, you will see, is pretty much listed in most of those, although they are not a department that leads a particular initiative. They are involved in almost every initiative. And so as you think about some of the priorities that you may be bringing forward, if there is a component that requires legal analysis, that is going to be a conversation that we have. So we will be prepared to talk through it. One of the reasons that we ask that you speak with me and our staff as we're thinking through it prior to your submission is that we can have that conversation ahead of time. If it is a big enough lift, I will let you know. This is going to require staff to stop doing something, or it can fit into or let us into what they're doing, or let us help you scope it in a way that can be timed or is small enough that it can fit into the work. But that is the ask of let us help you think through some of the things that you may be thinking about.
Okay.
Polakui, if you're not done, after you're done.
Yeah, I just brought up the work plan piece because if you look at the council priorities on the website, it's outside of the context of the everyday work that we do to run a city with infrastructure and all that. So I think it's really important to look at them together and for the community to be able to see kind of what that whole picture looks like. I thought it was great, so thank you.
So are you going to say if it's too much, no, we can't do that? Or are you just going to say there are trade-offs?
It depends. If your priority is larger than what can be done in a year, we will say it is larger than it can be done a year, and that's a no.
So when will you say that?
We will tell you as we're talking. If you bring it to us.
On the individual conversations that you have with us?
Yeah. If we're having conversations early, I will let you know that. If we're having, if I don't know about it prior to the retreat, then we're going to be talking about it at the retreat. If there are, if as we're talking about your priorities, either with me or with staff, and it is possible that we can scope it within a three- to six timeframe, but it impacts other work, then we still will have that conversation. You may choose to still want to bring that forward, and that is absolutely council's prerogative. But then we will have to have that conversation on how this will impact current work, and it will be a policy discussion for you to see whether or not you want to delay or pause or whatnot. That is totally within your prerogative as we move forward, and we will have that conversation.
I have a question, but first I want to appreciate the committee's work on this. I really like how this creates quite a bit of transparency and deliberation ahead of the meeting. I think it's great. So thank you. I know this has taken quite a bit of work. My question is, excuse me, thinking back to last year, part of the process we saw was a look at this work in flight, I think was the term then, and then a consideration of items on councilor's minds that might fit in, which wouldn't add work substantive, or wouldn't add work materially because it was, you know, maybe topical or substantive additions. And so we had that discussion, and then we went to the, okay, the new work plan items discussion. So I'm wondering, does that sort of taxonomy hold for this time around, or are we thinking about it differently in terms of those two categories of things?
I mean, that's an interesting question. I think this time around, and it's one of the... Last year, if you recall, we gave you the strategic plan, so you can really think about the priorities in the context of that as we were moving forward. This time, we're really, I think, more sophisticated, and I really appreciate staff. Every year, we're getting more sophisticated and advanced in work planning and aligning it with our strategic planning efforts in general. This year, we're really more thoughtful about giving you our work plan priorities so that hopefully that can be sort of a leading thought. It can be that your priorities fall outside of that. Our ask is, please think about the strategic plan because that is work that is currently in flight. The work plan is currently in flight, and if you're thinking about a priority that takes three to six months and we're advancing a strategic plan, then that is where you want to put your efforts. Other things fall outside of that. But I certainly would not have the hubris to say you cannot bring something outside of that. It may be that your interest lives outside of that, and then you have to see what votes you get. So that is a different perspective. I would add to that, that there are items that some of you may bring forward. For example, I have heard an interest in continued work on wildfires. Certainly, that is something that our staff is working on. You may choose to elevate a particular aspect of that as part of your work plan priority. That aspect could be the thing that jumps to the top of the priority list for staff in terms of how that is being accelerated or not, because there's a lot of things that we're doing in terms of wildfire. Some of them may happen this year, some of them may happen next year, and if your choice is to accelerate or prioritize that, that is what we want to know, right? So it's things like that that will make a difference.
Great. Thank you.
Answer your question?
That's good, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Again, Nicole and Tara, thanks for the great work on this. It's nice to have continuity on the retreat planning because I think it sort of shows the continued evolution, so thank you. Question about just sort of these, actually, this slide here is actually where I want to settle on a little bit. So we would submit priority projects to CMO, that straightforward, and then we would get this survey, and I'm just a little curious about what do we do with this survey? Because in past retreats, we would bring everything to the table, and then for those of us that weren't maybe cultivating a particular priority, would actually, that would be our learning opportunity to hear the why, the how from staff when we get to ask those follow-up questions. And so I'm worried a little bit, or just maybe, and maybe I don't need to be, but my question is, I'm not sure how I could fill out the survey without that staff context because I would be blindly just looking at a title of something and go, I mean, sure, like, that sounds great, but not having all that extra context. So in the survey, will there be that context from staff attached to it? So I'm just trying to understand what I'll be equipped with, with information to then be able to rank it appropriately.
Yeah, no, thanks for the question, Councilmember Benjamin. And frankly, that's a perspective that I...
Yeah, no, thanks for the question, Councilmember Benjamin. And frankly, that's a perspective that I think we needed to hear tonight. I think what we can do with that is ensure that we do that thorough review of the survey. We're going to do that in partnership with Heather through, she's going to sort of provide that to you as a third party. We can work to make sure if there are like really critical staff notes on a particular thing that we sort of include that in a description box for you. I think that's very doable. And I would like to add, the survey is not the be all end all of the ranking. There will be plenty of time during the retreat to continue to discuss. You will have the opportunity to say, well, maybe it appears at first glance that these top eight are the clear winners, but as we get into the retreat environment, if there's something lower down that there was, there's someone wishes to have further discussion on and elevate, like, I think there's going to be that opportunity. So I don't think it will be 100% every possible thing that we can preemptively provide to you, but I think we'll have enough description that then in the retreat, any of you could flag, I'd like to have more discussion on this piece, even if it was lower down in the ranking.
Okay, fair enough.
What I might add to that is that what's helpful from you all, for the benefit of your colleagues, is the more specificity in your proposals, the better off that will be because we will, that survey will include the description that you give us, right? And so that will be helpful as you provide us with your proposals.
Can I colloquy?
Jinx.
You go first.
When we get this survey, will there be any way for us to know what the staff's opinion of the time commitment is? Whether it's, it is a three to six, or will only three to six monthers get onto this survey? Or will it be everything? And will there be a way for us to know whether it's more of a three-year, one-year, three-month?
Hopefully you will have talked to us before your submittals, which is why we were asking for you to talk to me or folks in my office by the 19th, prior to your submitting that on the 21st. So please avail yourself of us so that we can have that conversation and we can help scope or help give you a sense of that timing. So there's still time to do that. If we don't have that, then we will try to get to you and figure that out. But if we get all of your proposals on the 21st, then that's going to be a hard thing to do. So the earlier you work with us, the easier it'll be to try to provide you with a little scoping of time.
And will we include the scoping in the survey?
We haven't thought about that?
I think we've been.
Figure that out.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. We'll work with the facilitator on, she creates the tool for us. So we'll work with her on a little matrix for you on each one or something.
If we want more information on a specific priority from somebody on the list, is it appropriate to find who they are and ask them questions, or should we not do that?
My understanding of how we intend to put the survey together is not to specifically associate each priority idea with a person. Part of that is because some of the priority ideas coming our way are of already of interest to several of you and so forth. And so to your point, we wouldn't intend to associate names. I think as you all have these relationships that you're building with one another, if you want to have those one-on-one conversations, you're welcome to.
So one of the things that we had talked about maybe the last time we were talking here was how we would sort of use the survey results. And for me, what I'm remembering is there was an interim step between the January 5th and the January 12th retreat, which was that we would each just bring two, two proposals to the retreat. And that was partly in response to everybody's wanting a slightly shorter retreat this year. Is that, that was the way that we could fit it in versus having like 45 different ideas that we're talking about there. So I was wondering, you know, is that, is that something that we're still interested in? Is that something that we just decided that it just doesn't work for this year? I'm curious about that because I think that is the way that it's going to help us get this done in a, in a shorter amount of time than usual. So, and I think the survey results were intended to sort of help each other inform what it is we're bringing forward.
You are correct about that, Councilmember Spear. We did talk about the survey being informative for you all to think about, sort of what do you then want to bring forth and really push for with your colleagues at the retreat? So we'd be happy to sort of clarify that as we approach the retreat of how do we want to show you to show up that day and use the information we've provided with you? So yeah, you're exactly right. We did talk about that.
Just to follow up for a second, we would basically just be doing like a shortlist. We would be talking about a shortlist of items for the retreat. What's the thinking?
Matt, did you have something else? Yeah, I hadn't finished my line of questions, but I, because I thought you were colloquying, but that's okay, no worries. No, all good, all good, no, all good. So just to finish off, Pam, you said something that was of interest in terms of you've kind of already maybe gathered that there's some communal interest on some certain things. And maybe that's then not a reason to associate any particular name because it's maybe some group think on that. With regards to submitting priority proposals, you know, do you want us to list a bunch of our priorities or really two? Because I think to some extent, there's already some Darwinism occurring in some of our pre-conversations where I'm hearing a colleague say, well, I'm liking this. I'm like, oh, good, I'm not going to cash my chip in on that. But it sounds like that might be helpful for you to know that that is of high interest to me. But how would you then know that if I've self-selected before, you know, emailing you? If I'm like, hey, you know what, maybe I am one of those wildfire folks, but how would you know that unless I gave you a list of 10 things I'm interested in knowing two are really going to be mine? And then there's that, again, that's how you'd sort of suss out those common threads. So I'm just sort of curious, where's that balance point, what you would prefer?
So as I'm hearing them and collecting them, and some of you have heard me already, and I'll be circling back because now I think I've heard from most of you, and I know some are still working on your priorities. I've encouraged some people to go speak with other council members individually, not to have serial meetings or violate open meeting laws. Because I'm sure my colleague here would have something to say about it. But where you have common interest, I've encouraged you to go talk to each other about what that looks like precisely for that reason. Because I now have a collective knowledge of some interest. And where there has been crossover, it, it has been a suggestion to say you might want to speak to this colleague about X, Y, or Z. So.
And also I think the survey will suss out where there's common interest in items as well. So we got that too.
It was a, to me? It was a colloquy on Nicole's thing about the two items. I think I'm imagining how this will work, and I'm supportive of the two items concept. But I'm also thinking about, again, hopefully I'm not being redundant, but last year, there was, there was a part of the discussion that centered on focusing direction of things already happening that weren't about, I think, added or additional bandwidth. I don't remember exactly what all those items were. So I'm just thinking that would ideally, we would have space for that in addition to the two items thing. It's a little abstract and it's hard to sort of do it generically. But I'm just thinking like, I would, I would hope and expect that we, you know, I would be able to weigh in on more than two things, you know, in total, especially if those beyond two things were just about providing focusing direction and not adding new, you know, need for capacity.
Can I colloquy there? Yeah, and, and, you know, I think with this retreat, what we've been talking about a lot in Retreat Committee is how much work is already ongoing and how much staff has in their, in their strategic plan. And I think in the citywide strategic plan, every time that we are asking for, you know, something to have special attention or something like that, right? We are adding to the work of that item. And so that was where in sending out the citywide strategic plan goals for 2026 in advance, the idea was if there are things there, those would be the things that you're bringing forward and lifting up for that extra attention and touch versus having, you know, putting forward five, five things and then also asking to elevate some of the citywide strategic plan goals as well. But Tara, if you're remembering different, or staff, if I'm not getting this correctly from our conversations.
No, I think that's right, Councilmember. When we, when you choose council priorities, it means that staff comes before council. It means that we prepare memos. It means that we do study sessions. It means that we do staff, we get direction from you all in one way, shape, or form, right? So be mindful of the things that you are asking us to come forward and the agenda that you have, right? Because there is that conversation about what are the many things that you have come before you? And what, what is the, what is on your schedule in terms of the things that we have to calendar as well? So I would just ask that you be mindful of what is highest on your priority list. And again, knowing that this is an unusual year because we do not have a usual year where we're so limited.
Thank you. Although I appreciate the concerns around having more than two, I would prefer to not be limited to two. Because it assumes also that the two that you're saying is the same scope, and that's not necessarily the case. So although I wouldn't want to have, you know, 10 or 15, so I'm fine with some parameters, but I think that two is too tight.
Rob, do you have something?
Yeah, thank you. With our priorities, is it helpful if we've had meetings with staff and they encourage our scope and it fits within three to six months to include that in our submittal?
I would say we, I would say a couple of things. For all your submittals, we will try to be, how do I say this? Be neutral about what you bring forward. So we will try to find a way, if it is a priority that can fit within a three to six or a one-year priority setting, we will find a way to say this is something that can be brought forward. So whatever it is that you bring forward, we will work with you to bring it. So staff technically will be supportive of your policy idea. So everything that you bring forward, hopefully that fits within that timeframe, will be supported if it is the will of council. So to say that staff supports or doesn't support, it's going to be a misnomer because we are going to work with you to make sure that whatever council priority you lift up can be worked within the, within the timeframe. So all of the priorities, hopefully, that you bring forward, we will work to scope it in a way that could work, if that makes sense.
Okay, good enough answer on that. Yeah. Yeah, Nicole.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of get into this point. I think if, if what, what council is looking for is for us to talk about more priorities at the retreat, I think we really do need to think about the time that we are committing. Because I don't know that we're going to be able to get through in a more condensed time scale if we're talking about more priorities. I think then we're back to where we were in 2024, where we're really needing to put everything out there, to talk through everything, to do like some sort of dot exercise. So I think if that's something that people want, I think we really need to know that tonight. I expect we need to give some feedback to Heather as well and just think about how to, how to do that.
Yeah, congratulations.
I'm fine, you know, I would be comfortable with, you know, setting some kind of limit around five. I can't remember how many there were last year, but I feel like there were more than, was it five last year? You know, I, this is one of the most important opportunities we have as council members. Many of us work with different community members and staff for months to prepare and to be told less than a month before it's due, or, you know, to make this type of decision after, you know, with very little time, even though there's many of us who have already been working on this for a long time. Just seems like not, I would have appreciated more time. I would have appreciated having this conversation much earlier because there are things that we, some of us have in play. And I just don't feel like we've been given enough, enough time. I would have just appreciated having this conversation earlier in the process as far as how many, how many proposals that we were going to put together. So my preference is to, is to stick with what we have and see, and I also appreciate this added step with the survey and into some of the other components to help with preparing us before we even get there. So. And Heather is a great facilitator. I feel confident that we can get to where we need to go, especially since the compressed timeline, you know, there aren't that many that are really going to be able to faithfully fall within a three to six month span. Thank you.
And I think that is, I think, the reason why you all have proposed a smaller number is that we have a more limited amount of things that we can get done in the one-year timeframe, I think. So you look like you're bursting to say something, Nicole.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, the, the, part of the reason that we headed in this direction was because the last time we were here talking about this, that, that was at least what I took away as what council was looking for there too. So I don't remember when, when it was last, maybe a month, two months ago, something like that. But, but we did talk about it then. And so, I mean, if, if people want to change it, that, that is, we can probably move forward with that. But I don't, I don't know that we didn't talk about this before.
Counsel, I believe it was September 25th was the last touch point during that study session, if I'm not mistaken.
It was a process, colloquy, it was a process meeting and we voted on that? We voted on two?
I don't recall voting on two. I think there was more of a general discussion.
It was a discussion. Okay, thank you. I was wondering, did we vote on two? And that's where I was saying I would have appreciated having that conversation if we were going to vote or make a decision at that time. I remember having a conversation, but I don't remember us saying we are all going to submit two. I didn't see it in the preparation documents that you are only, only required to have two.
Yeah, so I, my memory of the discussion, which is imperfect, was that it was more of a direction that we have a limited scope with the one-year council, and so therefore we have a limited number of priorities to take on. But not, but there was not a specific, like, there will be two, yes or no, everybody vote?
Thank you.
If, if, does that sound about right for the scope of our discussion?
I don't remember voting. Oh, we don't vote on matters.
No, we could do that now. Go ahead and clarify, and then we'll go to Mark.
And the idea is that for the 21st, right, we each have five, as we usually do, that we can do there. And then when we're getting to the retreat, because it's a shorter timeline, because we are trying to, because we just don't have as much time next year with everything else that's already going on, that that, that would be where we would then be kind of culling our own list. Or maybe we decide, you know, yours is so much better than mine, I forget mine. I'm just going to, you know, I'm really interested in one of yours. So that we would do that step after kind of having the survey results to see how things ranked and then decide from there.
So Nicole, to clarify, that on the, by the 21st, we could submit up to five, which would then be go into consideration in the survey. And then at, for the retreat, we would need to self-winnow down to no more than two per council member?
Yep, that, that is correct. And also, right, I mean, you all direct this, so like, tell us. Tell us what you're looking for. We're just going based on our last conversation.
So, and I got, I've had Mark here for a little while, so it's.
No, it's all right. Nicole answered my question.
Okay, yep, did you have something else?
I'm good now, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so, okay, I think with that clarification, I think we're probably good. Great. While we're, while we're still early in the evening, we are.
So let's be really clear, right?
Was it not?
Well, five recommendations, because we previously says come with two, so now we've expanded to five, to down-select to two at the retreat.
Counsel, I'd love to restate the cascade if I may.
Please, please.
Now I'm confused.
Okay, please restate.
Between now and December 21st, continue working with us to refine your priorities, up to five of them. Make sure we get those by email to Nuria with Meg's copied. Those theoretically 45 things will go into a survey that you will receive. You will force rank that entire list of 45. We will aggregate those responses, send that back to you. That will be a piece of information for you to understand where the general energy of council is. Using that plus your own priorities, you will decide which two things to then drive forward and advocate for at the retreat.
Thanks for that clear statement. All right.
If anyone needs that in a full equation, let me know.
But still in all, though, sorry, can I?
Quick.
Yeah. So, but still in all, even if we all have two, we're going to narrow it down to under 10, are we not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm happy to have three and five, yes.
So we're going to take all of our two, which is 18, and get down to three to five.
And it'll, honestly, it'll depend on which departments are impacted, what type of priority it is. So, we'll see. Yep.
Okay. And that is where the very talented Heather Bergman will assist us in winnowing that down. Okay. So, we have one more question for council. If you can just read that again, Tara, I don't think we've heard that second question.
We can skip this one. But it does say here, from Pam, "Does City Council have any final feedback for the Retreat Committee and Staff as we, they, us finalize arrangements for the retreat, including timing of each day?"
I do actually have one, just that I hear the desire from staff to keep the scheduling block there in case we need it. But I think with the one-year scope of this council, I don't think we need two full days. So, I would encourage us to look at maybe ending a bit early on day one, and maybe even a lot early on day two, if we're able to get through at all. That's my one piece of feedback. Anything else? All right. Yes?
Just a small thing. I am just thinking about, we've got limited, limited time to try to package initiatives for, and we're going to have to really, you know, ultimately be condensed. So, but I also think that, you know, this is, this is the one time in the year when we do a general stock-taking, or we have a chance to. And we've got this whole longer list of priorities for the city. And so, I think it would be appropriate to give council members some small amount of space to just do some stock-taking on their, you know, in their own words, if they have things they want to say about, you know, "Look, this, I didn't have a way to put this into my priority," or, you know, "This isn't, this is not fitting into the priority discussion." But as I look forward to 2026, these are some things I'd, you know, like us, I'd like my colleagues to consider with me. I'd like to be known. That might just be obviously already built into the agenda. But if it's not, I'd ask for consideration that there's a little bit of just open-ended space for council members to look ahead and talk about that.
Just a clarifying question on that, Ryan, so that we understand what it is that you're looking for. Are you basically asking, you know, can everybody kind of have some time to give a little speech, or something like that, like an introduction, or what would that look like?
I don't, I mean, yeah, it could just be, you each have three minutes to say whatever you want. You don't have to say anything at all. I don't know what I would say, but I just, as I began to look across the many things the city is doing, I am, one, really energized and excited about what we're doing. But also, I have thoughts coming to me about, "Oh, gosh, I hope when we get to this one thing, like, you know, we're, have this in mind." Not that I intend to do an inventory of all of our projects, but just that there are patterns and connections across all of it that I might want to say something about, that won't make it into the official priorities. So, yeah, I think if everybody were given a couple, a few minutes to talk to the future, that would be great, something like that.
I did, yeah. Yeah. And it was just a wondering, you know, would that be an opportunity for a hotline or something before? Or, you know, or would people like some time? I guess just having some direction from council would be helpful here.
I mean, I might say that, I mean, I think we generally have the ability to offer a few thoughts when we're talking about a topic. So, if you at some point say, "Well, as part of our retreat priority discussions, I have a few thoughts about connections between these things." And it feels pretty doable, as long as its scope is not too large. And then also with the caveat of thinking, if you make certain comments about, like, "Hey, I'd love for us to take this tack on this initiative," one council member can't direct staff to do things in a certain way. So, but if you want...
Fine. If this isn't making sense to others, we don't have to. It just seems like this is the stock, this, if there's a time when we do a stock-taking in a general sense without a lot of rules about how we want to analyze how things are going and looking at the future. If there's interest in that, I'd support it. If not, we don't have to.
I guess my just thought would be that we don't necessarily have to have a formal part of the agenda in order for you to make some comments about connections between work plan items.
Okay, thanks. I'm happy then with whatever the committee decides fits in the agenda. I don't need anything particular in this. Thanks.
Taysha?
Thank you. Not quite a colloquial, but I can see, like, for example, this is supposed to be a staff council retreat, not just priority setting, do you know what I mean? And get to know and team building, which is also, I still, I do value that. But one thing that came up when you were talking about things that aren't a priority, but something that we rarely get to talk about as a full council together, outside of a meeting, like, I'm thinking about the budget process. Like, there's many of us who talk about different things in different ways, and just, "Oh, that's a really great time to kind of, it's not necessarily a priority, but it's something, we don't really ever have time to really talk about it collectively before it starts rolling." So, that's one example. Or the calendar, like, we approve the calendar dates. But, you know, in my two years here, I've noticed, and although I appreciate the six months in advance and all of the ways there, as somebody who's been doing strategic planning for a very, very long time, you know, I would love us to have a chat about, like, you know, "Hey, let's make sure we have a conversation on public safety," or whatever it is. Like, you know, it doesn't have to be a surprise. I think that, you know, for example, we didn't have a big session on public safety this year, and there is, I've had a lot of community questions, like, "Why didn't we have that?" Like, they were expecting that, "Oh, this is an annual thing that we do," or, you know, that there's just certain things that happen in certain times of year. I just would like to us, I would love for us to be able to look at the calendar and really think more strategically about study sessions and some of those things. I know a lot of that comes sometimes comes out of the priorities. But since a lot is already baked, I'm less, you know, concerned around identifying those three to five, very small, three to six-month priorities, and really seeing this as an opportunity to do some of the, you know, for the, I'm looking at the folks on the Council Procedures Committee. There's so many things on that list that we could get solved in a very short amount of time, when we're all in the same room at the same time. So, to Ryan's point, I do think because there are less things for us to have to talk about this year, it does open the door to, ooh, additional conversations and opportunities for us to brainstorm. So, again, I'm more so just saying, I would like to stick to the time that we have and continue to have a more robust timeframe, even though we have less priorities. I do think sincerely, there are several things that we, conversations that we could have. And I could see Heather coming up with a very cool way to come up with, like, conversations, or whatever. And maybe that's a part of the, of the team-building work, right? Are there topics or things that we can discuss that also would help us to get to know each other better? So, again, I'm not suggesting that I would like to revise the thing, but more so offer that this is a very valuable time for us to come together and brainstorm on a variety of things beyond council priorities, which are very important. But there's a lot of other procedural things that I think we could have the time to clean up while we're there. Thank you.
Point taken. All right. Anything else on this item?
Should we take a straw poll on, because if we're going to do that, we're definitely going to extend the retreat to the full two days. So, I guess my question is, is, do we discuss that now? Or Pam, do we discuss it as a retreat committee later? Or what do we do?
I would say at this stage in the planning process, it would be helpful to understand the will of council as much as possible tonight.
Yep. Yep. And what I would say, I think, you know, we are, we are including some time, as we always do at every retreat, for thinking about process improvement kinds of things. I think that, and, you know, staff, please correct me if this is the wrong way to think about this, but, you know, if we were looking for deeper dives into certain topics or things like that, that I think might, for this year, count as its own priority, because of the time, I think, that would go into preparing something like that. But so, you know, I think in that kind of case, like, if, you know, wanting to talk about the budget process, and like, council's role in that, and something like that, that might be a priority for this year, as, you know, something to put forward, versus something that would necessarily happen at the retreat itself.
I don't see that budget discussion as a council priority. And I think that the conversations that we could have could inform the process for this year. I don't want, and that was just one example. I guess maybe there could be even in the survey, you know, are there discussion areas or topics of interest that are outside of the priority as something for the council procedures, or maybe a tee-up to the council procedures? Like, we had that survey that was asking us, do we have, you know, desires to change particular procedures, or issues, or challenges with procedures in advance, so that we know what some of those topics would be? I guess, you know, I appreciated that council procedure conversation, but I thought that it was not long enough for the amount of things that we proceed on. So, I would actually strongly, I spent the whole day today on luncheons, and very important, taking my photo. I can certainly, I'm willing to take two full days to do strategic planning and have a longer retreat. So, thank you.
Okay. So, I guess what I might ask, Taysha, it sounds like you would like to have an additional discussion that's not kind of currently on the agenda. And so, maybe if you could say, like, a specific proposal for an agenda item add, and then we can see if council would be interested in...
I don't have anything at this time, Mayor. I'm fine with, I guess I thought the question was, do we want it, did we want to have the retreat timing be a day and a half or two days? And I'm advocating for two days, recognizing that I'd rather have more time to talk about the agenda items that are currently there, particularly if council procedures is already there. I would rather extend the time, so we have more time than try and add on more agenda items. Thank you.
Fair point. Yeah. And so, we are blocking out the two full days. To my earlier comment was that if the, what was on the agenda was, did not need all of that time, that we could end early. But if we do need all of that time, we will take all of that time. All right. Pam, do you have what you need?
I believe I do, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Thanks as well to Tara and Nicole for your hard work on this committee, and I'm sure it will be a very productive retreat in January. And with that, we come to the end of our agenda, do we not, Elisha?
That is correct, sir.
All right. Any final thoughts before we wrap? Welcome, Rob.
Thank you very much. Truly an honor to be here. And the short time I've spent with everybody in this room, this is one hell of a team. I'm really excited. Thanks.
No question. Just don't get used to us ending at 7:37.
You just got spoiled. You got super spoiled, my friend.
All right. And with that, I will gavel us closed here at 7:37 PM. Have a good night, everybody.